Okay, we'll go ahead and call the order of the June 6th Planning Commission meeting if we can do roll call.
Commissioner Ruth.
Here.
Commissioner Newman.
Here.
Commissioner Christensen.
Here.
Commissioner Wilk.
Here.
And Chair Welch.
Here. Thank you. Okay, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, come your God, indivisible, liberty and justice around.
Okay, for welcome to our audience, we probably have a much larger audience on, watching on TV, I'm sure, so. This meeting is cable cast live on Charter Communications Cable TV Channel 8 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. It is being, actually it's not on AT&amp;T U-verse, just to let you know, because it hasn't been there for like three months, but we're working on it. It's also being recorded to be replayed on the following Monday and Friday at 1:00 PM on Charter Channel 71 and Comcast Channel 25. Meetings can also be viewed from the city's website at www.cityofcapitola.org. Our technician tonight is Kingston Rivera, and if you would, just make sure your cellphones are on silence and we appreciate that. If you come up to speak, just sign into our roster so we have that for minutes. With that, we will go over to, what do we have next, additions and deletions to the agenda.
We received one addition to the agenda for item 4A on consent for 1375 Prospect Avenue. It was a change to a bathroom window, and if this stays on consent, we would just suggest that in the motion that it be noted with the addition, additional change as amended.
Copy that. Very good. Any public comments? This time is for those people who would like to talk to the Planning Commission about anything that's not on the agenda tonight, so. Do you, would you guys like to come up and talk to us? Nothing else on your mind? Okay. Very well. Seeing that, we'll go ahead and we'll come back and ask for commission comments.
None.
None?
Nothing here.
We're seeing how, what kind of record we could break for, how quick we can get a meeting done tonight. Staff comments?
No comments.
Okay. So we're moving on pretty good. Now we're going to move to approval of our meetings from our, the minutes from our meeting on May 2nd. Do I have a?
Move to approve the minutes.
Have a motion?
Second.
The second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so that passes. Our next item is our consent calendar, which the items on the consent calendar get voted with one motion. We have two items, one for 1375 Prospect and another one for 606 Burlingame. Is there anyone that would like to pull anything from the consent calendar? Any of our planning commissioners? Oh, yes.
I had a question. I don't necessarily want to pull item A, but I had a question for staff about it, which is, does the, the parking configuration meet the code? I mean, we've got four spaces and they're all tandem spaces, and I thought there's a limit on allowable tandem spaces without a variance.
You can have two in tandem behind the one in the garage, and so this is two in tandem behind the one in the garage with another one off to the side, so technically it's not three in a row. Three in a row wouldn't have worked.
Well, so the one that, what tandem implies is that the car behind has to pull out. For you, and this one, the one that you're not counting, has two cars in its way in order for it to get in and out.
Under code, though, it says you can have one in the garage with two tandem behind it.
But there.
There's one on the patio.
My point is there are three, there's one in the garage and three behind it.
Three behind it?
Not in a row, it's, sorry.
Oh, if you can pull up the.
Yeah, one's kind of parked on the patio that, it's kind of, that's the one you're talking about?
It's got, I mean, it can't get out without that curb behind it moving, so how can that not be a tandem space?
You can back out of that. Depends on what you're driving.
Huh?
So you can pull out of that, depends on what you're driving.
Yeah, if you're driving a helicopter.
It's a, it is an interesting parking configuration.
Oh, side by side.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, the, we did explore an alternative, putting a whole nother curb cut down on the southwest corner. But it just would have been, you know, more, more curb cuts, more pavement. So, and this, this technically works the way we, the code reads, so.
Would it qualify for a variance?
I guess it is an oddly shaped lot, though it is very large and, you know, could have designed their way out of it, I guess, but.
You know, and I, I guess it depends on the size of the vehicles, it, where they're at, on how they get in and out. It's more of an inconvenience for the owners, but I don't, yeah, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Commissioner Newman, about the tandem, what the actual ruling is there.
And the tough one here is that, you know, what we're, what we're required to do is have them show these 10 by 18 blocks there. In reality, you could actually park three cars in a row on that driveway and they would totally fit, so most likely this parking arrangement won't actually happen.
You don't have to park in that diagonal configuration.
Yeah, it's more of a sort of a Tetris thing when you, you're at this point of the code, so. Because that's a very large driveway there, and then there were only, I believe, a couple, you know, two feet short on being able to technically do three in a row, but one, that wouldn't be allowed by the code. And two, we have to have them show it correctly, so.
Okay, so I'm not going to ask if it's pulled, but I'm going to ask that we vote on the two items individually.
Okay, we can do that.
So can I ask a question since we're on that prospect?
Absolutely.
The, I just wanted to make sure that, we talked, Katie and I talked about this landscape plan thing. Is it clear that they, when they submit their landscape plan, that they don't need to have hire a landscape architect to do that?
Yes.
They're aware of that?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
So, any more questions for staff or? Is anyone from the on-site concerned about our consent items? Then we'll bring it back and we'll do two separate motions, and if we're going to make a motion for Prospect, we just got to remember the motion needs include the supporting information that we received today.
If you'd like, I can pull up the section of code to review that prior to the motion.
Is this coastal, this is?
It is in the coastal zone.
So it's the old?
So it's the old code.
No, I read it.
Okay.
I mean, I, apparently it's an interpretation here. I interpret it a little differently.
Okay, I would move approval of 1375 Prospect Avenue with the addition of the condition regarding the three bathroom windows on the south facade.
Great, we have a motion, a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'm opposed, I just, for the record, I, I think the parking requires a variance.
Okay. So we have one opposing. So we'll move to 4B for the consent calendar, all those in, oh, I guess first we need to make a motion.
Move approval?
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
So that is approved unanimously. Okay, so that's it for the consent calendar, we'll move to public hearings. We have one item tonight, which is 529 Capitol Avenue, and then we'll ask for staff to.
All right, so for our public hearings tonight, we have 529 Capitol Avenue. The applicants are in attendance in the audience there. The applicant is applying for design permit and a conditional use permit to add two dormers to an existing historic residence located at 529 Capitol Avenue within the CN Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District. The application requires a conditional use permit because it's a significant change to a historic structure. The existing residence is a non-conforming two-story, single-family residence. The house is recognizable as a somewhat altered mid-19th century national-style cottage. The national style is embodied in vernacular, steeply pitched, gable-roofed houses with half stories at the upper level. The, they are commonly clad in board and batten siding and feature two-two or one-one double-hung wood windows placed individually. The primary character of this historic house is obtained from its simple form and materials. So we have our existing elevations, do a good job of illustrating the eaves. That was an important line that needed to be preserved in this project. Then we have the proposed elevations. So the applicant is proposing to construct two new dormers, one on the northwest side and one on the southeast side of the existing second-story roof. So shown here. The, the bottom left image is the northwest side and the top left image is the southeast side. The dormers preserve the archetypical 1870s, steeply pitched roofline at the front and rear elevations. The dormer will have shingle siding to distinguish the non-historic dormer additions from the board and batten siding on the historic structure. And their proposed additions do not increase the floor area or height of the structure. The proposed project includes a significant alteration to the historic structure. Significant alterations require conditional use permit with approval by the Planning Commission. And any modification to a historic resource must comply with the Secretary of the Interior's standards to qualify for a sequoia exemption. Architectural historian Leslie Dill has reviewed the project and concluded that is, it is compatible with the Secretary of the Interior's standards for rehabilitation. Local historian Carolyn Swift provided additional information about the history of the structure at the Art and Site Review Committee meeting and requested that complete and accurate history of the building be documented. Leslie Dill reviewed the materials and provided a memo in which she determined that the changes in explanation of the historic background do not change the description or list of character-defining features of the historic property, and maintained her previous conclusion that the potential project does not diminish the historic integrity of the significance of the property. So with that, staff recommends Planning Commission approve the design permit and conditional use permit based on the conditions of approval and findings.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff?
Just a minor question is, the plans usually have more of a, have a page that shows the particular parcel in relation to the rest of the area. And there wasn't, maybe it's not that relevant for this particular application.
The streetscape?
Yeah. It wasn't, at least in my set, I couldn't find anything that showed the overall site.
We've got a couple of those lately.
Context, I think it would be a good idea, I mean, this one, there's no real change in any side yards or height or anything, so maybe it's not as necessary.
With the adjacent structures, that one, which we typically?
Something that shows the street and the, you know, parcel and.
Frank Banton usually catches that, but he didn't catch it, catch it on here, and I think I didn't notice because it was such a small addition to the existing structure.
What's at issue here probably doesn't really require that kind of information. Be nice to have it though, as a general practice.
Frank keeps me honest with that. I usually tell applicants upfront to make sure to show the outlying properties for privacy reasons, so.
Okay, any other questions for staff? If not, would the applicant like to speak? If you're going to, sir, if you want to come up to the microphone so we can hear you, and then you can be on TV.
That's okay. Do I, should I sign in?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay, I'm Jim Latori and I've, my wife and I, Kathy, bought the house recently, and we are, actually, Capitolans from back in the early eighties when we moved, got married and moved to Depot Hill, so we're pretty familiar with Capitola and over the years. over the years, um, we, my wife has a preschool, and I was a school principal and administrator for 35 years and now recently retired. And we're super excited to be back in Capitola, and super excited to be, um, have the opportunity to have this house. It's a, it's a really cool house. In fact, um, I, just in, in knowing people, went to a hundred-year-old lady's birthday not too long ago, and I was talking to her, and she said, Jimmy, I heard you moved. And I said, yeah. She goes, what, what's the address? And I said, 529 Capitola Avenue. And she told me that her mother was born in that house in 1899.
Okay.
Yeah. And, um, so it's pretty cool. There's some history. Um, it's, uh, the Canepa family who, and then one of the girls married a Gio, and that's Casagnola, so it's all the old-time Italian bishop people. So, it's pretty cool history for me, 'cause I'm Italian and I kinda relate to that a little bit.
Nice.
So, um, uh, and the house is a really cool house. We don't wanna diminish the fact that it's a historic house and has some significance to Capitola, but, um, I probably should've come with a, a Band-Aid over my forehead because there's some places, um, I, I, in order to get into the bed, I have to kinda lean over. So, what we're looking to do is just to raise the roof a little bit so we can, um, have some, um, and you saw in the pictures how steep it is. The, the stairs are super non-conforming either, they're super steep. Um, and, um, so, we just wanna get it so it's livable for the two of us, and, um, and, uh, so we just hope that you guys could see that, that we're not trying to build a three-story monstrosity. We're just trying to do, um, what's right for us to live in comfortably, but, um, understand that we wanna keep the history of Capitola there.
Very nice.
Anything else?
Don't talk anymore.
Thank you, thank you for your...
Very good. Well, you moved in, you moved into a neighborhood with, uh, a number of principals, so.
Yes.
You did well.
Most of us don't have principals either.
Yeah. I won't go there, but let's, I'll bring that back to, if there's no other that would like to speak, which I guess they not, we'll bring it back to the planning commission for discussion and motion.
I'd just like to say, I'm glad you purchased the place because it was getting neglected, and now it's gonna survive and be restored, so that's great.
No comments.
We don't have any comments, and someone can make a motion.
Seems like a good project to me.
Great.
Uh, I move approval.
Okay, so we have approval. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. unanimous. Very good. Thank you. I'm good. It's a, it's gonna be a beautiful house. Glad to have you.
You're all invited.
Keeping the history. Great. Okay, so that concludes, uh, most of our meeting. Now we'll go to the director's report?
Yes, I have, uh, three items tonight. First, first item is, I received a letter from the architect on 1810 Warf Road, and this is the property that you can see across the river. They, um, in their preservation plan, they said they would be saving all of the exterior, um, siding, and what they did is they numbered every piece, they, uh, piled it up, and they've stored it. As they're at the point of going to put this back up, they've, in going through the boards, there's quite a few boards. There's a, a significant amount of boards that are damaged, and they're asking, rather than, um, than putting all the boards back on place or picking from the best and doing just one area, that they'd like to have new boards milled to match what was existing. Under the criteria, the, uh, community development director is allowed to approve minor modifications to a project. I'm prepared to approve this, but I wanted to just check in with the planning commission and see if you'd prefer that I put this on an agenda item rather than make an administrative decision on allowing, um, the boards to be replicated. But I do feel that, um, from the evidence they've provided, that it would be the best decision.
Didn't we do that on the Lin's House?
We did this on, um...
On the water tower at the Lin's House?
You may have. I wasn't involved with that. This, this came up at 124 Central previously as they were preparing to put the boards back. Um, they only ended up putting back a section of the boards because of the, um, significant termite damage. So, this is one of the oldest structures in Capitola, and the boards are not all the same measurements, and when they re-mill them, they also will make sure they're not the same exact measurements. So, they'll keep the funkiness of the building and the original concept, but, um, they'd like it to last a whole lot longer, and that's what they're requesting. So, I just wanted to check in, see if you'd like this to come back to planning commission or if you're okay with a development director decision.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with your judgment on this, but it seems like since this is happening more than once, that when we make these kind of decisions at the beginning, we should kinda take this into account, that when they start construction, it's not gonna, it's gonna be a little bit different than we probably think when the plans come in.
Yeah, and we stress that to applicants when they come in, is if, if you want this, you should really request this at the time of approval by planning commission, so.
Yeah, I, I think the alternative to, what are their choices here, would just delay the process and get the same result. So, I don't have a problem. Does anybody have a problem with just an administrative?
Yeah, and I think there's precedent, because I think we allowed that on the, the water tower at the Lin's House, and then years ago, I think, when one of the Six Sisters was restored, the one, it would be the one, the northerly one?
Right.
I think we allowed that on that case, too.
And we did at 124 Central, so it's...
Good memory.
These houses are old, so thinking that we're gonna put the old wood back up there is, is nice, but it's very optimistic, like you said. Okay, and, uh, next, Katie?
Um, next is, uh, the city has received a conceptual review application for the Village Hotel project. So, the conceptual review application is in. Um, there were some minor changes we asked in their, for the, um, actual submittals. We sent them an incomplete letter. They were planning on coming back in this week, and...
They did.
They did today. Okay, so that, that is officially in. Um, so, we're gonna be seeing how much room we have on the agenda for the July hearing, but you may be seeing that as soon as July. We'll try our best, because this is a big project, to get that packet out and, in a timely manner, or if you'd like to see the plans ahead of the packet, we're happy to provide those to you, 'cause it will take time to digest. And they're just asking some broad questions for the conceptual review, uh, prior, prior to moving forward with a formal application.
And Katie, what are they gonna do, are we gonna do, the city, any special notification other than, seems like we need to make the whole city aware of, it's a major...
So, we typically notice to anyone within 500 feet. Would your recommendation be 1,000 feet or, um...
Yeah, I, I'll take...
How about something in the newsletter?
That's what I was going to say.
Yeah, I mean, this is really a controversial...
Yeah.
They're already organizing.
Yeah. So, if, if we could put something, and maybe it doesn't have to be as formal as the notification we do for 500 feet, but, uh, the city website and, and the city newsletter, like, uh, commission...
We can do extensive noticing. Um, I'll broaden it to at least all the, the residential neighborhoods around the village, not just the village, and...
But if you do it by the Sentinel, have them do an article.
I can definitely do that, yeah.
It's not really the, uh, an issue of neighborhood. It's, you know, it's the whole city issue.
It's the whole city, yeah.
Yes, we'll, we'll get it on the webpage. We'll, we'll inform the local newspaper. Um, as far as the newsletter, I don't think that will go out in time for the, prior to the July hearing, so.
And the, and the July is, this is a conceptual review.
It is conceptual review, so if...
But this is the time, probably, we need to get the input.
I would even think if, if we can't put it in a newsletter before the July hearing, that might be a good reason to do it in August. I, I really think...
To delay the meeting? I, I, I agree that we need to get all the input before we get too far down the road.
So, I have a question about the process. This is a big deal, as you pointed out, and doesn't that mean that this is inevitably gonna go in front of the city council?
It will. It will go, this conceptual review, they've, um, paid the fee to go before planning commission and city council, so it'll go before...
So, we're just an intermediate step?
Well, we're, but we're a big intermediate step, 'cause we're the ones that will be making the decisions on the initial changes and stuff, so, um, it will, it goes to us for approval before it gets to the city council. So, if there's gonna be any issues, we, we need to hear them out, I think, before. Just, we just need to make sure that we let everyone have their chance to share their concerns or favor either way, and...
Just I've seen other issues that were big issues where people came in and, you know, petitions and this and that in front of the planning commission, then felt, you know, oh, gosh, we gotta do this again in front of the city council, and it just seemed to me that, yeah, the process seems to be very...
The general plan, oh, I'm, go ahead, Courtney.
What was it?
The, the general plan, uh, process, this was really a big part of the general plan process, probably biggest behind, uh, 41st Avenue Mall. And so, I agree with the chair that, um, we, we wanna make sure that nobody feels that this is kinda being slipped through in some way, or that there are hearings that they weren't aware of, or, that from the very beginning, as this thing proceeds. And I, the, the city council, in my experience, I mean, we're just a planning commission. We deal with all the planning issues. They deal with some planning issues and lots of other things, too. So, they rely to some extent on what we do here, and we, it's not just a, uh, waste of time to come before the planning commission and then go to the city council, in my experience.
So, do you feel that, that we, we perform a different function than the city council was?
We do.
My thing, my thought was that, you know, they're gonna go bend over backwards to satisfy staff's requirements, and then they come in front of the planning commission, and then we give them a bunch of requirements, and in fact, that if they were to go directly to the city council, maybe none of those requirements were really needed to get passed to city council. And so, if we're in fact providing valuable, either information for the city council or, or a legitimate intermediate step, I, we're...
I think we're a filter, and we iron out a lot of the issues before they get to the city council, so the city council doesn't have to deal with them. I mean, our decisions can be appealed, but that's why we exist. If we didn't have that function, if we followed your route, there are no reason for us to sit here.
Well, I, and I understand that argument. I just thought that this, since this is such a big thing, and, and clearly all the city councilmen are all very aware of all the issues, and I was just wondering if we were providing that much of a filter.
Yeah, they deal with, with something like this in general, not all the time, but in general, at a more of a policy level, a higher level.
Implement.
And we're down, kind of in the trenches, dealing with the details of plans and having them come back and so forth. I mean, it's, it's a different function.
Okay, so, so, okay, so we would get, the idea would be, we'd dig deeper, in theory anyway, and then provide a recommendation that they could really take to heart that this was a well-studied decision and maybe even listen to us.
And, yeah, whether to listen to it is a whole different issue, but at least we, we could do our due diligence, absolutely.
All right, fair enough. Thank you.
Very good. Okay.
Okay, yeah, and I'll just echo that. In these very large projects, the planning commission plays a very important role in my mind, because as you see, when, in the larger projects, the recommendations, um, in reviewing recent development agreements in other cities and preparing for the mall, the strong, um, recommendations by planning commission, they may get tweaked when they get to city council, and some of them may get, uh, removed or added to, but it's a very important role in setting up, you know, your recommendation and what should be included in a project or removed from a project, so. And it does it, and it gives the opportunity for the, um, the developer between the planning commission stage and the city council stage, at least a conceptual review, to be brainstorming and have, can, uh, bring up additional mitigation points when they get in front of city council based on planning commission's concerns that are highlighted during your review. So, um, with that, I'll move on to the next item. So, as you all know, from your hard work back in February and March on the zoning code update, the city council has been reviewing the updates. Um, at the last three hearings, I believe, I've presented to the planning, to the city council, and during the first meeting, they asked that we slow down and make sure that we have a thorough legal review of the document before resubmitting to the Coastal Commission. So, our city attorney, Reed Galigley, has been working on the review of that, and I've just been bringing forward the minor amendments of things we've noticed over the year of implementation. Um, so, Reed's presentation will be at the June 27th meeting, and during that meeting, he's gonna be looking at, um, which items are in overreach of the Coastal Commission's power for, um, whether or not they, they're within their power under the Coastal Act to suggest within our document, and then we'll be dividing those into two categories of which, which are kind of the, the gray areas that we maybe can live with and we don't think are, um, negative for, or will have a negative impact on our residents in our city, and which of those items are more impactful and we shouldn't allow to occur. So, we'll be, the June 27th meeting should be of interest, and you're welcome to watch on video after or come in, come and attend. And, um, in hindsight, I'll just say that we went through that section pretty fast on the Coastal Commission, and, um, I'll bring back reports after the city council review, but I'm, I'm confident that after the legal review, we've had such significant changes occur, that this will be coming back to you before we submit it to Coastal Commission. So, at that point, I'll slow down. I'll go through everything, give you adequate time to digest. Maybe we'll have a couple special meetings where it's such important information, and then, um, move forward with a new recommendation to the city council at the correct time. So, any questions regarding that process at this time? So, yeah. Okay, well, that concludes the director's report. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thanks, Katie. Uh, commission communications?
Go here.
No? Okay, we're looking forward to a car show weekend, so the city will be, uh, closed down more or less for through traffic, but, uh, that's about it. With that, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much.
But when is the July meeting?
Oh, yeah, that's...
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth? Because it always gets pushed because of the Fourth of July.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, thank you. July 18th. Thank you.